Yeah, so they're gonna put it forward.
United States of America, initiate their complete official stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody get a chance to read the minutes. One thing I seen was, motion to approve the minutes was a six elbow and a five elbows here. So, we're gonna change our seat. Have I seen the one ten motion? With the chair. Ashley makes motion.
Second.
Bill second. Be in discussion on. Hold on some favor.
Alright.
Repose. Okay. Jamie Brown, lifetime of research.
Good morning, everybody. I'm actually Michelle Guy, this is my first time, right? I am here for our 2025. Our 2025 funding request.
If I, so.
So, um. As we are requesting $10,000 in 2025, which is our normal request. We're at 53, I'm a public transportation provider, and our federal grant requires 100% match. To Decatur County, we have limited sources to a net match, the city, county, the United Fund. We also have contracts with DSI and all the insurance providers that operate in the state. Help us get that matching funds that we need to operate. So, we have two routes that operate regularly that start out with Decatur County. That we have six other routes that typically are coming in and out of the county providing transportation. So. The United Fund also funds us each year, and is a good partner for us to appreciate all that they do. We certainly appreciate all the county councils that are for us as well. If you have any questions or need regarding our service, so that I could potentially answer about our requests.
We keep a good job.
Well, we still are short drivers, pretty much across in all six counties that we operate in. The one thing that we need insured is that we always have drivers in Decatur County. So, we're short in other areas, we'll take drivers from Brooklyn County, close those routes down to Decatur County. Always has that we operate even though we're short.
Are you conversant with vans, trucks, whatever?
So, the interesting thing is, we will have to continue to keep some buses just due to, especially in Greensburg, because we, this is an area with transport, quite a few individuals to Decatur Industries or to work at Infinity. So, this is one of the areas that will try to keep buses. But the price for our replacement buses went from $56,000 to $116,000. And we have to have 20% match for our vehicles. And we never want to like county or city here and ask for that. So, those are bonds we typically try to get from the community foundations and other grants. So, we can replace one minivan, and the matching funds are $14,000, $14,000 versus replacing a bus. So, we have to come up with, I think, there's what else? So, in the areas where we can, we are downsizing to minivans, because a lot of the areas we don't transport numbers. So, the county routes and stuff that we operate. Size. I'll have to try to find all that.
We'll call, okay, you have to drive, you got chauffeur's license?
Yes, it's just a chauffeur's license. Drivers go through a lot of training. They have to go through passenger assistance, free trip inspection, emergency evacuation. There's four trainings that they go through through Indiana World Transportation Program. They have CPR first day. So. And there's a lot of training just to know our policies and procedures. You know, our vehicles all have tablets in them, that's how they run their routes, to know when the pickup and drop offs are. So, they need a lot of just training to be able to drive for us. It's a long hiring process, and the partners that we have are generally really good folks, love what they do, love helping the people.
Russ, any questions? We'll take a look at it next month.
Alright, I appreciate it. We also did receive a marketing grant from Bethany Wessie Foundation down at Jefferson County. So, they're gonna help us put together some marketing materials to help us market. Our services are better, so looking forward to that. Good work. Let's work on that, that's the whole part. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Lisa Hermwich?
Obviously, I'm not Lisa. I've been asked to step in for her today. My name is Taddy Ground, the president of the Board of Directors for Tendons Youth. Formerly Big Brother's Big Sisters, I can talk with you guys last year, I'm sure you're all more than aware of the change. A little bit about our program for people that may not be aware. We provide one-on-one mentorship to youth in Decatur County through a structured, community-based and school-based 20 program. These programs match an adult, couple, or high school age student with a youth who is considered high-risk because of their current environment or situation. Our Tendons Youth mentors are people who give ongoing support to school-aged children. We typically work between ages of five and 18, and we provide continuous, continuous support through that mentorship, through the active risk in our community. Some statistics for you. In 2023, we served 262 youth, we matched 26 new kids. Our current program, our core program, is kind of that one mentor program that's outside of the school-based program. And currently, we have 74 matches associated with that. 2023, we had 6,773 contacts with families, mentors, and schools, and the councilors as well through that program. We have proven the success of this program over the last 44 years in our community. The request of investment that we're asking for allows us to serve even more at-risk children as the need for the community arises. Our statistics show that one in three young people in our community will grow up without a mentor. Children who are matched with positive mentor are 55% more likely to enroll in college. 78% less likely to get in trouble, whether criminally or academically. 76% less likely, less likely, excuse me, to initiate drug use, which is more important as we conquer the deadly drug epidemic that's going on. The connections that we made through our mentoring programs changed lives, and we truly believe that they benefit our community as a whole. We are very proud of the fact that we boast a 100% graduation rate among the kids matched in our core program. And that's been through our association on a local level as well. This year, like previous year, we're asking for $10,700 investment that goes towards our rent, our liability insurance for our building. Obviously, all of that stays on the local level. We don't send any of that through any other organizations on a more national level. So, the money that we're asking for does stay in our community. So, yeah, we believe that we create a better community through the impact that we have to our children. And we believe that every child deserves a chance to realize their potential. We can't do that without the community partners. Any question?
You were at the old schools?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions?
We're a big helper, it's up here, if you know, if I was looking for rewarding, off to work and self-care.
Good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Take a look at it next month.
Thanks.
Sarah Frye.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sarah Frye. I am the new director of the Greensburg Adult Center. I took over about 90 days ago when Monte Shields retired. So, I am learning the reins and getting used to everything, meeting lots of new people. This is my first time here, so hopefully I'm gonna do this correctly for you. I have presented you with our 2025 proposed budget, the 2024 budget, and the actual 2023 income and disbursement. Our major expenditures are direct revenue wages, building maintenance, and operating supplies for the center. Toilet paper, paper towels, cups, coffee. Last year, we did have to take $10,000 from our savings to subsidize, so our budget showed a $10,000 shortfall, which is really required from that, just due to increasing expenditures of everything in the market. I am currently working on a couple of new marketing things, they're getting some advertisements out there. I've been on the radio once, I'm working to secure more time there and getting a good Facebook page so that we can reach more people and hopefully get more people to enjoy it. The other thing, we are looking at a new property because ours is on its last leg. It's from 10 years old, and they no longer make leases for it. So, that's another fun expenditure that we didn't want to see. But we send out 440 newsletters to the community and patrons of the center. And without that, I fear the newsletter wouldn't go out, which has our schedule of events and all the information.
You're asking for money, don't you?
I didn't put a specific request on there, that's what it's been in the past. But thank you for your continued support, and whatever you feel would benefit us, we would greatly appreciate it.
You're asking for money. How many people are you serving now? Quite, quite a few.
On Mondays and Tuesdays, there's, I would say, on Sundays, there's up to 45 people between all the card groups that meet. A lot of it, Mondays, Tuesdays, we have UCR, Wednesdays are bingo, and those are all open to the public. And then there's several closed card groups that meet at other times during the week. Thank you.
Take a look at it next month. Thank you, man. Mindy here? Here. Krista?
Nice. Good morning. I'm here today to ask for your support. Every week in our office, we get multiple calls about property owners, from property owners with concerns about their neighbors or somewhere they've driven by that has trash, junk, lactate cars, or unsafe buildings that need to be torn down. Just blighted properties. Today, we, they're kind of hit and miss. So, I am requesting some funds to be put in a non-reverting home so that we can start addressing some of these issues. To start with, I have asked Marie Shepherd, she's the executive director in Jennings County, for the area plan. I've asked her to give us a brief overview of a program that she put in place. It started out as a proposal to clean up Country Squire Lakes. So, she is on Zoom today, and she is going to go through the packet that we provided. Marie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Marie Shepherd, yes.
Okay. And so, good morning, council. And Krista and Debbie had asked me to talk to you real briefly about our program. I started with area plan in 2016. And when I was hired on, one of the things that they wanted to see done was a cleanup in our county. And some of you might be familiar with Country Squire Lakes. Country Squire is bigger than the size of North Vernon in population-wise. And it has, over the years, became a renter source for mobile homes to, that are no longer livable. And we had quite an issue out there. So, when I was hired, that was our first priority, was Country Squire Lakes and the county in general. So, with that, we did not have a lot of operating money. And we did have an unsafe building fund, but it had $34 in it, which was not gonna get us anywhere. So, the council and the commissioners were in agreeance that in order to turn our county around, that we had to do some major cleanup. And so, the first, in 2017, they allotted $50,000 to our, to put in our unsafe building fund. And if some of you are familiar, unsafe building fund is part of the code when you do with area plan as far as code enforcement, and that is through a state statute that you do have to have that fund. That is a non-reverting fund. I will tell you real quickly that we started out with around $50,000, and we have now in that fund over $300,000. The council gave us $40,000 to $50,000 every year, and then Country Squire Lakes gave us $25,000 up until the last two years. So, how I was able to build that up was, when we go in and do a demolition of a home or a mobile home, we have to go through the court system, and we actually, once we collect, do the job, we take it back to court, and we put that on the tax duplicate. So, we are able to money back. And after you have tax sales or settlements, that goes in account, and then that goes back into our unsafe building fund. So, that's how we were able to build that up. And in Country Squire Lakes, we had, we had probably torn down over 300 or 400 mobile homes in there. And keep in mind, those were very blighted. Most of them were not even in livable conditions. And then in the county, I would say we've probably done over 100 demolitions between the county and the city. So, we've been very proactive, but it only works when you have the agreement and the commitment from everyone, because obviously, it takes a lot of funding to do that. In July of 21st, which you have in those packets that were submitted to you, we, we had an ordinance already, but we beefed it up. Because a lot of times, your definition, definition of junk and blight is maybe different than mine. So, we tried to put in there exactly what we were referring to. And one of the other things that we did is we put levels of violations. And depending on those levels, is depending on if you go straight to court, if you're allowed 30 days or 15 days or a show cost hearing. And our area plan here is probably 20, 20 cases a month of show cost hearings where people come in about their properties. And then we have probably on an average 20 cases a month that go to court. And so, we do keep our court system very busy, but they too are very proactive and on board with us to get this done for our community. And it, it's a good thing because, one, you get these properties back on tax rolls, and we're getting, you know, property taxes off of them once again. Most of these mobile homes and things have been setting, the county did not generate any taxes at all. And most of the time, there were squatters living in them, so, I mean, we were able to do that. And I guess I should just pause a moment and see if you have any questions. I can go on about some other things, Chris, if you want me to touch on anything else.
Go ahead, go ahead. So, after you clean this property up, you become the owner of the property?
No. No, we did not.
For the property.
So, we clean it up per court order, and then we take it back to court, and then we put a lien on the property. So, either they pay that, or it goes on tax sale. And then that's when we get our money back for the cleanup.
How much of Country Squire Lakes did the county take over? Did they end up owning some of it?
Yeah, they took over, I don't want to say for sure, but most of the main roads in there. Still think there's a little bit left to take over, but they have taken over quite a bit in there. And I tell you, where we ran into, it was an eye-opening experience, and luckily, we had some in our unsafe building fund. We have Butlerville Schools that was collapsing, and the owner just walked away. So, the county was stuck with the demolition of two buildings out there, and that cost was over $140,000. And unfortunately, we'll never see that money, you know, just because of the piece of property and where it's at. But we were able to cover some of that with our unsafe building funds. And so, even though it sounds like, wow, you got $300,000 in there, if you get any of your old buildings that you're gonna be responsible for taking down, it'll, I mean, you'll get rid of that pretty fast. So, the council and commissioners have been committed to keep that money in there just for some of those reasons. And then we have recently started putting, we got to the point, like, the worst of the worst is pretty much gone. I'm not saying it's all gone, but now we're getting into cleaning up people's properties. And that can be a little more trickier when you're hiring a contractor to do that, to go on someone's property when they're living there. So, we started enforcing fines, and those can range from $100 to $1,500. And right now, I think we're over $30,000 in fines that we've collected. And we started a, a non-reverting account for that, because the unsafe building fund is pretty strict on what you can spend that money for. So, we started a fund called Fines and Fees, and that allows us to do some, if we have to go in and do a cleanup that really doesn't fit the unsafe building, we can tap into that fund as well.
You said you tore some down in the city?
We have torn quite a few down in the city. And I can say, we do cover the city and the county. So, the city doesn't have an area plan, I don't know if Greensburg does or not. But what the city does, any demolitions that we do in the city, they will reimburse me for that. And then I put that in our unsafe building fund. And then when we collect on that, then it stays within our, you know, stays in that fund. So, that's how they contribute to the area plan.
I think our city does have an area plan. Really, it would just be county is all you're talking about, Russ.
Yeah.
Marie, I have a question. Did, did the county physically take or end up with property in Country Squire Lakes? A lot of the property out there, is it owned by the county?
No, we do not own any, any, any property at all, none.
You did take over the roads, the maintenance of the roads?
The county did take over the maintenance of the roads, yes.
Just wanted to clarify.
So, all the work for this program goes through the area plan office, is that where it's all initiated at?
Yes, uh-huh.
And then your enforcement, enforcement comes through the sheriff's department?
No, it comes through myself, and we carry it all the way through court. And then, once we get a court order for a cleanup or demolition, then we send that out for bids, and that's opened up an area plan meeting. And then, then after that process, once we do that, we take it back to court, and that's when we have it placed on tax duplicate. Our sheriff, the only thing our law enforcement is there, is sometimes we need them to go on inspections with us or a cleanup, or they serve the papers through the courts. So, all that's done through our office. And in your packet, you'll see, there's different levels. I think you got the pictures in the letter. There's different levels, and that's why I was kind of showing you about redoing our ordinance. There's ABC, and then I've given you a copy of some of the court, how it's handled. So, our judge gives us one day a month, all morning, and that's when we hear all of our area plan cases. But our commissioners and council, I think, have been pretty happy. And I do know we have an FBI agent called in and said, what is going on with Country Squire? Because it's a different place. And when I first started, I had someone call me and say, I inherited this property. She was a realtor, had a client inherit this property at Country Squire, I don't know anything about it. And I said, well, good luck trying to get rid of it, because you probably won't even give it to somebody. And that was a true statement. And today, we have new houses being built out there, and properties are going from 120 to 130. hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand for a mobile home. So, I mean, it, it's working. It's been eight years in progress, hard work for my staff and myself, but it is working. And, you know, to look at forty or fifty thousand to start out and what we've accomplished, I think everybody's pretty pleased. And that's why I, I've shared with Jefferson County and I've shared with your county. I'm sure there's other things we could be doing or could do better and hopefully we could all share that. But I feel like it's been a great road ahead of us and, and the properties are getting back on the tax roll and we're just seeing the county being cleaned up. And I think we all get kind of tired of seeing those mess. Like I said, the buildings, I don't know about your buildings downtown, but that's been a huge concern of ours. And after Butlerville Schools, to see what that cost us, we're prepared now if we have to do something else, so.
Does anyone have any questions? The commissioners plan passed all your ordinances, correct?
Well, we have a unified zoning ordinance, so it has to be passed by the county commissioners, the town of Vernon and the city council. But yes, they have the final approval over the ordinance changes. And then we have an area plan board of nine who oversee that.
Russ?
I, I know the commissioners have been working on that with Chad on a, in County Union, working on blighted properties. I know they've already started some ordinances or something. I know they're working on it.
I think we're just talking.
Okay.
Did your, your area plan commission put your ordinance together?
No, we, of course, we do have a commissioner and a councilman of each of those that sit on our board. So, and I don't know, Krista, I'm sure yours is maybe set up the same way. So they're always, they're always aware of what's going on, but we had to have several public hearings and it wasn't a fun time. Ordinance changes is kind of a, oh, it's just rough because people don't like, you know, it's my property now, I should be able to do what I want with it. But in the end, yes, we had three public hearings and then we brought it before each commissioners and councils to pass, or council to pass and, and they did. And that went into effect in July of twenty-one, so.
You know where they got the money to start the fund? Where?
Well, I'm guessing that it came from the rainy day fund. I always hear that fund name, so I'm going to say that that's where it came from. And, you know, if you, you, and I think they've kind of been planning for this, I think, because like I said, when I was hired on, I told them, I was told that was my priority. Any, even if you start out with twenty-five or fifty, you're not going to see the turnaround the first couple, even the first year, because you've got to get that on the tax duplicate and then it's probably not going to go on tax sale to the next year. So it's going to take you a year or two to recoup that. But once you start getting it on there and eventually it's going to get, you know, sold at some point, especially like our property CSL, you will see that you'll get your money back. And now honestly, for probably the last three years, I wouldn't have needed them to give me any money. But again, when Butlerville Schools hit us, we realized we want to keep that fund up there just so that's not a burden that they're going to have to come up with, you know, on their own. We can cover that now out of the unsafe building fund, so.
Does anybody else have anything?
Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome. You need to let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Danny, I would like to just say if you think in support of Krista's request, there are a few of us in this room who've been meeting now for over a year, several times to discuss this and how we actually go about this and the need for it. By doing so, we, I know Kenny has sent several letters and through the commissioners meetings, you can hear there have been a few things taken care of, but I'm going to speak specifically about Lake McCoy because that's where my work has been done. And we have been talking with property owners, they have received the letters, we've just, you know, personal visits out there and we've seen improvement out there in just a year with just being friendly and helpful for them. And I think that that's, you know, a great approach to take. I know you have to be stern and you have to go through courts, use that when you can. But I like the fact that if we can do the, I don't know what, what Krista has exactly for the proposal, but if we can do the step, the step-by-step procedures so they do get some fines first or if they, you know, procedure of letters so that it looks like we're just less forceful with them and, you know, maybe give them a chance and work on it. But we have seen some properties that have been behind in taxes for years and some of those people have already caught up on their taxes. We've seen some, again, improvement and cleanup just by us talking to them. So I think that we can, should continue to do that. But at the same time, I had said to a few of you personally and also to some of the commissioners that anything that we do, we all think as individuals who are working with them, we have to have the backup of the county because if we have those ordinance and we're saying, you know, you're going to, let's stop, you see what we can do to clean this up. But if you, you don't want to say if you don't, but do say that if you don't, then this is the procedure we have to go through. So if we have those ordinance, if we're going to tell them that we need to back it up and we'll have to have the funds to back that, to get it started. We, the Murray's Hall presentation last year was very impressive and I, I think it can work if, if everyone's on board. And she said that to us so many times, everyone has to work together on it, the court system, county council, the county commissioners, you know, even local trustees, several of us, everyone in the different offices of the courthouse. You have to work together. Thank you.
I, I think it's something they would look at, but I'd like to see a plan put together and how we're going to approach this whole thing.
Okay, currently the commissioners do have an ordinance. It is the unsafe building ordinance. There are plans that the building commissioners send out a letter. We ask for them to respond. We ask for cleanup. If they don't respond or don't clean up, then it goes to the county attorney. He sends out a letter. If they don't respond, we take it to court. We, the court orders a cleanup, we have it cleaned up and then that money's put on their tax. And that's how we've done it in the past. We've only done it a few times. And in, okay, he sends out a letter. Fifty percent of the time, the people just clean it up. They didn't realize it was a problem. They didn't see it, you know, it was there and they, they go, yeah, okay, I'm good. And they cleaned it up. The rest, they either ignore you because Karen won't do anything and go back it up or they just don't do it. We've only had a couple instances that had to go to court. One of them, we did this, they had filling cleanup. The money was put on the tax roll and they paid it up. The other one, they ended up paying also. Yeah, they ended up cleaning up before we got them. All they had were turns because we did, did go to court, but didn't clean it up. We would just like, she spoke about Lake McCoy. That's kind of a entity on its own and, and that's where we start. But Vernon, Milford, these small towns have so much potential. You know, I grew up in Adams. It was a small town. Your kids could go out and play. Everybody knew everybody. The neighbor would call your parents if you got out of line. I would love to see these small towns come back to be something for me to want to go to Adams and build my house, me to want to go to Vernon. We have a number of complaints in Vernon, sorry, Vernon right now and we are working on getting that, but we need a little bit of money to back us up so that when the court says, yep, you can go out and clean that up, that we have the ability to do so.
I, I see that part. I want you to, I would like to see a RIN plan where I can read how you're going to approach that.
Personnel, do you have staffing to take care of this program?
Well, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel and Marie has got the same programs that we do, so we could initiate very quickly a lot of the hard work that she's already put into it. I'm not saying that, that we could do it, but Kenny had time in his schedule that he could go out and start doing this research and we may need a part-time for a year to get everything up, to get the forms, get the, you know, all of the charts that we're going to need to keep track of everything, keep everything in order. I don't believe Debbie and I can do it to start with, but I would like to get, I would like to, I just think that we have lost so much of our small towns and all of them need help and Patty Chapman's here from Vernon and she is on board and our whole committee just, we want to move forward.
I think I kind of see where Danny's coming from too, as far as, you know, we're not disagreeing with you, but we would like to see, you know, you're taking on extra work. What kind of expenses is that going to be, you know, because when you start doing that kind of stuff, it's not just for this year, it's going to be continually going on. So we need to know what the expense is going to be to initiate the program.
We would have to.
Yeah, so we need to see what that's going to look like so we can, if we're on something, we're going to be able to do that.
Yeah, the building.
I'd like to see how it's going, so if we're going to need to do something, then that's what it needs to have, where we need to know kind of what that works on. But you're also going to create more work for yourself. So, you know, and you can't come back in January and say, we're going to have to have a full-time person to do this program. We need to see what your plan is on how you're going to handle that workload, what it's going to look like, that kind of thing. I think we would be better formed if we saw that because from our perspective, we're the ones going to have to fund it. So just going into and say, yeah, we're going to support that, but we don't know what's the policy.
I just want to get this in front of you and see if there was funding available, see if, you know, and tractor brings, what, what can we do? Is this a good project or? But yeah, I will put together a flow chart of exactly what's going to happen and obviously we'd have to have part-time, you know, get it set up and roll it in it by year or two before we could get all of that in place. But again, I'm not going to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, it's already placed.
It's got a good system and a lot of that we can.
Well, I agree, there's a lot of nature that I have. I'll draw a few of those, too. Vernon, Airline Edge, I know.
Have you talked with the city's area plan and of course any partner you're going to table the city?
It's just kind of a different, different animal, you know.
Well, they have, they have ordinances for that kind of stuff. I can't see this.
And we already have the ordinances as well. We do that.
I can't see this, but the city has their deal going on. When I'm living, I can see Greensburg, they've already got their video.
Oh, no.
Where is it?
We don't do any rules.
Okay. Does any of the ordinance, they tweak?
They do a little bit, yeah. There need to be an outline that's a little more defined, but, but our ordinances are good. Those out, the procedure, our finding structure for the real intent, but, or, yes, we have enforced them, if they're going to the court system, they are enforceable.
Now, I just want to say something. I've been fighting this for years for where I live, with the commissioners. Everybody just gets pushed under the rug, always send a letter out, well, okay, if you follow through with anything. No, they do not. Things are out of control. Some of these residents in the area where I live, they just couldn't care less. They make you mad, they make you mad. They don't care. Something needs to be done. Commissioners and all of you, you start working together to get this done. A lot of us take pride in our, in our homes, in our areas, but the ones that do not care need to be dealt with. I'm just, I'm getting tired of fighting this. I fight it every year.
Just background, Patty's been playing for five years about.
Oh, I think it's been longer than that.
And what happened?
For years.
So now, let's just know that you're not pitching anything.
What town?
And there's just a few. There's a whole bunch of them.
It's a few that have ruined it and not, nobody will do anything about it.
And it's.
It's time.
It sounds like it's self-supporting after probably years.
After we get started.
I won't help in any way to get, you know.
I agree with you.
To work with all of you to help get things going.
Just want to see what kind of plan to put together, we'll follow through with.
It's just time.
And it's really that part of it's not ours. I thought I think that's a follow-through through area plan and commissioners and their lawyer.
Well, right now it's the commissioners and County Union.
But you can't.
We will take on.
We fund it. We fund it.
But you can work together.
We work together and fund it, yes.
And again, right now it's through the commissioners and their county union and the building commissioner, but we, we are willing to do what we can to get this going. It's, it's, now, when I started here, this line one, I wanted to play it small town. I want to get people back into small town, you know, get a little post office in your store or something and.
Yeah, I have a idea of what kind of.
I was hoping for fifty thousand and if our taxes.
Danny, with what Beth said, I'm also on that committee. So when the county would have to go out and clean any of these blighted areas, we can actually, when it gets paid or goes through tax sale or whatever, it's kind of like the tax sale add fees and the tax sale fee and the add fee. I, I can go into the property tax and Janet, I checked with her where she could add like blighted civil judgment and that way the county gets their money back upfront. But I have to specify it. I've already checked with SRI or tax vendor. He was in yesterday, Zach, and he said it can be done, but I want to run it by Chad to make sure that it's all legit. I mean, we put on water liens, I mean, there's different things, you know, but if you don't specify, then that actual payment of the other assessment gets taken last. But this way upfront, the county can recoup that money in the first, right? So that way.
This is, well, I'm talking about putting a plan.
Right, right, exactly. I just wanted to say that.
Oh, some money itself. That's just my, my opinion, my hope. Are you with me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny, it's going to be a long one, thank you. We knew that, we heard that we're working on in Westport too and just the kind of Westport was given was ARCA money, I think, and the success they've been having there too. So just in general, a similar format, but probably on a larger scale since it's not the county instead of just the town, but, you know, inside of consideration as you guys, we have, it's planned and all work with them too, whatever I need to do to help her to get that due and sure everyone else, but, you know, would that be a consideration that we look at? Are there still ARCA funds or other kind of funds like that that we could potentially ask to tap into?
Yeah, would it be such a thing that township could, I know you've put a budget like, there would be something we could get some funding out of the townships?
The other townships, well, Washington Township, the others are all smaller and of course have a much smaller budget. It would have to be worked into as well, just the same as any, anything on a budget. I don't know that, I'll have to see if that's actually acceptable.
Like McCoy.
Yeah, like McCoy was separate because then we had already owned them, you know, so it was our property.
That's right. I don't want the town to get into the real estate business.
And I appreciate that, yes. So if you go through the proper procedures, if you can do it all and get it back from the tax sale, you know, unfortunately there will probably be some properties that wind up on the tax sale because they will not do it. And, and Vernon, there's probably going to be a few of those, but, but just progress can, can start, you know, that started and it can be made because there are people who can do these tax sales and buy them, but, so then you can get, you know, the, the money back from the tax sale and also get it back on the tax roll and start generating revenue getting from it.
Okay, take a look at.
Thank you.
Okay, transfers, let's get those out of the way. Like a barrel insurance, dispatch, nineteen. I'd like to bow all in, just dispatch nineteen. Do I have any questions? It's not all in the same motion to approve transfer.
Big question.
Actually makes sense to approve transfer. Ten seconds, end of discussion. Holders in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got two additional. Do I get a copy of those? One for five hundred and forty dollars and eighteen cents for Green Berth Smith for overtime for dispatchers. Made by the VST, VSET brand. Nine one one. Do I get questions, Brett?
I'm making a motion.
No, my motion approved. I play seconds. Any other discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next one is for nine one one, refrigerator. Thousand ninety-eight dollars. Breakdown?
We only have one, but only nominated, we have five less employees than what we have now. Um, so we just split it into two standard size refrigerators because one, we had the ice machine busted and water sensor busted. And so we died. Two standard refrigerators during their.
You have two, pretty good deal, pound ninety-eight dollars. Other questions? You're paying a motion approved.
I'll make that motion.
Any, any rest of motion, only seconds. Another discussion. Holders in favor? Any opposed? Okay. That's all I have on agenda. Do you have something you want to say about this here, just home service?
Yeah, that's the first, uh, first half of the year pop service.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for Kelsey? Brian, Hannah?
I'm just hanging on Thursday, eleven o'clock. As far as, yeah, I should have invited her email to Thursday. And then, sure, the commissioners, the, the, the big focus force, uh, this month, D U B, uh, part of, uh, he helped expand, uh, seats in, and especially with. But, uh, anyway, we, uh, yeah, with, with school, get ready to start, not just, we're trying to make sure that the.
Go ahead.
Do you have appropriation there for Martha? Jan, did that get out of the comments?
I'm sorry.
All right.
We sent it to the paper and they said that they couldn't get it timely, so.
Okay, so it'll be next month. Be next month, okay.
I know we passed an ordinance on interest breakdown, didn't we?
Yeah.
Next month?
I said it was last month and it went down pretty close. Was it here July first, but, or, we see it in, yeah, I said.
Yeah, I think, as soon as it starts in July, we can bring it.
Good, next month? Anybody else have anything? Make a motion, Ray, Ron. Get my motion, just wait. Hurry, check. And this guy's shown out, all of them, very well. Why do you want to contact?